We'd like to bring this meeting back to order. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go into presentations, I'd just like to take a quick moment of silence for the late Congressman Elijah Cummings, who passed and was a sitting member of Congress from Maryland. If we would, I want to just take a moment for him. We do have two presentations this evening. Our first presentation will be for Mr. Doug Smith. He's from Oakland Community College. Yay![86.36][86.36](laughter) And he wants to talk to us a little bit about the upcoming millage. So, Mr. Smith, can you just give us your name and address for the record, please?
Douglas Smith, 2480 Updike Road, Bloomfield Hills, Michigan, 48304. Members of City Council, Mayor, thank you very much for giving me a couple of minutes just to remind, I guess, everyone that we've got a millage election coming up on November 5th. It's a renewal millage, just a straight renewal of 10 years. It's .745 mils. Not a lot, but it means an awful lot to us. It represents about $45 million a year, and it's 27 percent of our operating budget. So, I would say, just be aware that the election is coming up. We hope you'd support the community college. We're doing our best to try to offer programs from cosmetology to auto servicing to robotics, trying to close that skills gap the best we can. And we really, if you look at our constituency, we have about, we serve about 27,000 students each year. And of those, the, the, those students really reflect the, the nature of and the character of Oakland County itself. Between the African-American population, the Hispanic population, the Asian population that we serve, it's almost exactly that of the county itself. We really have an open door to everyone. We're really trying to, about 50 percent of our students come to us and, and go through and either finish an associate's degree or transfer. We're the largest transfer institution in the state. We transfer most, mostly, I mean, our largest transfer goes to Oakland University, but we transfer to Wayne State, to MSU, to U of M, to MSU. And so, you know, that's half our student. But the other half of the population comes to us of all ages, of all ethnic backgrounds, and they want to, they want to have job skills. They want either one class, or they want two classes, or they want a certificate to either keep their job, to enhance their situation with their employer, or to find a new job. And our job is to make sure that they have the skills necessary to do that. So, we've renewed our work with companies of all types, small, medium, and large companies. We've just formed a relationship with FCA or Chrysler to redo our entire auto servicing area, so we'll now have a certified MOPAR training program. We know that there's a lot of jobs out there, and our job is to make sure that, you know, that employment is a legitimate outcome of some of the education that people are getting and the training that they're getting. So, again, November 5th, we have an election coming up for, just, it will not raise the tax rate above what it is today. Again, it's .7545 mils, but it's very important to us, and we appreciate any consideration you can give us. Thank you. I'd answer any questions you might have.
Counsel, any questions you'd like to ask?
Thank you very much.
Yes, Mr. Fracassi.
I just want to let you know how proud we are, and I'm sure speaking for everybody up here, of what LTU is doing and the expansions and working with the city. It's really a pleasure working with the university.
We're talking about OCC on this one?
Oh, it's Oakland. I'm sorry.
That's okay. We work closely with LTU and their next.[286.14][286.14](laughter)
I'm president, Kate from Oakland.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Have a good evening.
I apologize for that. Since I went there, I have to give them a little bit of back on the back.
All right. Our next presentation is on Centropolis Accelerator Grand Opening Event. Mr. Zorn?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Rochelle Freeman, our business development officer, is also with me, and Mark Brooke from Lawrence Technological University. I want to just walk counsel through a five-year planning exercise for our joint LDFA. This afternoon, Ms. Freeman and myself were in Troy, who was our partner in our joint LDFA. The joint LDFA, we also refer to as Centropolis. And during the last five years, a lot of the hard work and effort of this council has been accomplished. I want to just quickly walk you through some of those projects. The rebuilding and reconstruction of 11 Mile, which was critical to keeping federal mogul now tentacle in Southfield. Also, the Franklin Road roundabout, the branding of the theme Centropolis. We were able to connect the roadway just in front of BASF, and also keeping and securing their long-term interest here in Southfield. We relocated our Career Center two and a half years ago to the Marx Building on LTU's campus. One of the goals that this council accomplished was expanding the Smart Zone to include LTU. And we, just this afternoon, were discussing one of the few Smart Zones joint LDFA's to host on a college campus, a Career Center. And the drumroll is for what we accomplished and what happened on Friday, October 4th, Manufacturing Day. And now, I'm going to turn it over to Shelley. I just wanted to frame it, five years' worth of planning, a lot of people to thank, obviously the mayor and city council, the Planning Department, the Assessor, Finance Office. I have two legal boxes of documentation on this project, so a lot of effort is taken, is going into getting there, and this is something we, as a community, should celebrate. This is about, and I just want to, one final comment, frame this. When we did our first bond issue, we were trying to figure out how to get our bond rating up, and one of the things we were factored on was, well, you're, the city's unemployment rate was a little higher, but we've brought, we've brought that down, but we still have work to do. The last time we went through the bond this year, one of the conversations was, we need to increase the disposable income for the residents here in Southfield. And this is about creating prosperity, or what I like to use the term, in our SEMCOG planning documents, where we're referring to as shared prosperity, opportunities for more people. And one way you do that is by enhancing your entrepreneurial track, and that's what this project's really all about.
It has been a wonderful project to work with Lawrence Technological University. And Mark Brooke, he's been a lead and a real strong advocate for the new accelerator space that has opened. Also, Maria Vaz, Provost for the, for Lawrence Tech, is here as well. You know, as Lawrence Tech did their major expansion and created a better sense of place and with our planning department and creating a real strong city-centered district, the accelerator and our Michigan Works office has really been a nice attribute to add to all the wonderful things that have been happening in the facility. I'd really like to thank Mark so much for all of your hard work and energy in bringing this project forward, and I know that it's been a long, several years. And, you know, you were really instrumental in helping us find our new executive director, Dan Rimdowski, who was unable to be here today. But he has really strong ties in the entrepreneurial world. He is an entrepreneur himself as well. He's got a strong track record with Next Energy, and so he's brought a lot of really great resources to our facility. And I'm going to turn it over to Mark, but thank you so much for everything.
Well, hello. I'm Mark Broke. I'm Executive Director for Corporate and Community Partnerships at Lawrence Tech, and I want to thank you for a long-term vision of having an engagement with Lawrence Tech and the great partnership that we have, especially related to the Centropolis Accelerator. So, on Friday, October 4th, we, this is National Manufacturing Day. We brought together 160 people for the ribbon-cutting operation there that we had, and then in the afternoon, we had a grand opening open house that we attracted 350 people. So, more than 500 people joined us that day, including Southfield Public Schools, who did a National Manufacturing Day project that we helped them with. And so, we have a video here as a recap of that day to share with you. But, again, thank you so much. We'd love to be able to have and host you at some point in time in the future at the accelerator space. It's 6,300 square foot of space. It has office space, but more importantly, it has a prototyping lab for product design and development that includes an AR and VR augmented reality video center and a physical prototyping session. So, you have digital and physical coming together. We are the only accelerator in the state of Michigan that focuses on helping people make things, and so we are concentrating on having manufacturing and startup manufacturing. And that industry segment has the greatest economic ripple effect of any other segment in, 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 in industry. So, whether it be adding retail jobs or, or other services, manufacturing is a driver. And so, we're looking to be a catalyst to be able to do more of that. So, with that, thank you, and here's our video.
When you ask people what they think about Michigan, they'll quite often talk about our manufacturing strength. But hardly ever when you hear them talk about our product development strength, that part of the value chain of manufacturing, there is simply nobody better than Michigan. And what we do here at the Centropolis Accelerator is we work with companies that idea of physical products, and we bring all that talent that is already here to help support their mission and bring their idea to life.
There's a lot of startups in this region who have a great idea, but they don't have the resources and technology to be able, under one roof, to really speed the development cycle. That's what this lab is really for, whether it's a physical lab or a digital lab. We can bring that information to life.
This has been a wonderful dream for both the city and the university, to create a collaborative space, to take advantage of all the new technologies, and to showcase how those resources can work together.
So, it's very unique that we have a technical, professional, services, and mentors available to help companies with physical products, design, engineer, and start manufacturing products and grow their business. We're really poised to really help Michigan grow manufacturing, which we're known for.
The strength and the vitality of a vibrant community is the result of key institutional partners working together towards a common objective. We have companies moving here, and they're looking for talent. We need to retain talent here, and this center is one of the ways, it's a great tool to do that.
I think that's the real strength moving forward, and to be able to have a go-to-market strategy, that you can say, hey, I can go from this concept to prototyping to a finished product in the box, ready for the market, in such a short time. I think that's invaluable, and that wouldn't have been possible without the accelerator program.
By celebrating the opportunity of this Centropolis Accelerator, it's a way to inspire the future generation that Michigan is the home for manufacturing.
An event like today is verifying that our country is moving in the right direction, and I can go back to Washington and say, it's working. The message, the partnership, the federal dollars that we allocate toward manufacturing and for facilities like we're in today, it is truly working.
If you have any questions, be more than happy to answer them.
All right. Counsel, any questions? It's a very nice video, good presentation. Looks like we're heading in the right direction. Thank you very much.
I do, I would just like to add one thing. It's just a small world, that Doug Smith, who was with Oakland County and with the MEDC, you know, we have such a strong relationship with all these different partners. He was one of the first groups that was working with us, and Don Fracassi, when we established the LDFA many years ago. So, thanks, Doug, and it's great to see, he's still a strong partner. Oakland County Michigan Works will continue to be a supporting system for the clients at the accelerator, and we also were part of Manufacturing Day, and we had our staff out throughout Oakland County, and many of the Southfield Public School students were involved in that program as well. So, thank you so much.
All right. Thanks, Shelley.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to apologize for giving LTU the big boost there, but Oakland deserves it, and I hope everybody goes out and votes for it.
That's Oakland Community College.[927.00][927.00](laughter)
What?
I said, just make sure.
OCC.
Oakland Community College.[932.13][932.13](laughter) You got me?
You go there or something?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.[937.32][937.32](laughter) You better get out and work for them then.
All right. Very good. But thanks for that clarification, again. Thank you, Mr. Smith, for coming up. I've got two sets of minutes to be approved.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the regular meeting minutes of September 23, 2019, and also the committee of the whole meeting minutes of October 7, 2019.
Support.
They're moved by Mr. Brightwell, supported by Mr. Taylor, that we approve the regular minute meetings of September 23rd, 2019, and the committee of the whole meeting minutes for October 7th, 2019. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right. Minutes are approved. I'll entertain a motion for consent agenda.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Morris.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve consent agenda items A through J.
Support.
It's been moved by Ms. Morris, supported by Mr. Fraser, that we approve consent agenda items A through J.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Fracassi.
Yes, I'd like to have that G removed from that agenda.
Okay. Is that all right?
And, and also E.
G, E and G?
Okay. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve agenda items A, B, C, D, F, H, I, and J.
Support.
All right. It's been moved, amended, motion made by Ms. Morris, supported again by Mr. Fraser, that we approve consent agenda items A, B, C, D, F, H, I, and J. Are there any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So, we'll go back to item E on the Northland application, authorization to submit rezoning applications. Mr. Fracassi.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the reason that I oppose that, if I get the right, right, I'm Under the application submission authorization to submit a rezoning application, according to the letter of October 21st, it states that council has authorized the city to enter into a purchase agreement with AFJ Development Company to purchase real estate, a purchase agreement for a portion of the property held by the city of Southfield, known as the Northland Redevelopment Project. I have no idea of what item they're talking about. Why I say that is because AFJ is also requesting a zoning of another matter in that, in the Northland area. In the previous zoning that we had, there was an item in where a person could buy and then land lease the development. And I asked, how does this enter into getting the proper approvals for what part and what area? To this day, I do not have a site plan. I say as Chair of the Site Plan Committee, I do not have anything of what we're referring to, as far as if you make an application to the state under this proposal, you'd have to designate where they're going to put it. And council has the last group that approves any lic relations in the city, and because of that, I just have to oppose this, as all, as well as, as, as ever in regards to redevelopment project area designations discussion.
Did anyone else, any other members have any comments, concerns on these issues, or these matters?
Let me see, let me give it a try. The city owns Northland. No one can rezone any part of Northland unless the city gives them authorization to apply to rezone. And this is what this is about. A stranger can't come to a piece of property that you own and ask for a rezoning unless you give them authorization to do it. Typically, a person already owns the piece of property, and then they come to the city for rezoning. In this situation, because the city owns it, Jonah is asking to rezone it, but we don't have a site plan because it isn't rezoned yet. Once it gets, once we give him authority to rezon, then he can go ahead and do the other things that needs to be done, but nothing gets approved unless it comes through council. But in order to get it started, you have to go to the owner, which is the city, to ask for the rezoning. And we, and what this is, is to give him authority to come to the city to ask for rezoning. That's all. That's the way I understand it.
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep, Mr. Fracassi.
I understand my place on this issue because, you know, we seen from the planning department an entranceway and roads that were designed, and, and we have not seen the site plan, how that fits in with the roadway, the network at Northland. And so, when you give a, a right to a person to apply under this law, state law, that they own, and a contract could be placed because the same corporation has both parcels looking for their approval, that, that could be interchangeable. And so, unless you see the development and see what is proposed on it, and where that license is going to be placed, and what parcels, I can't approve it. There are a lot of people in this city that are looking at the Northland development, and I had a bunch of them here the last meeting, and, and from what I understand, there's a lot of individuals in this city have, even though the vote in this city was for the uses with marijuana, they didn't know where it was going to be placed, and they're very upset about it. And it is growing and growing and growing, and I'm getting a lot of calls that, when is this public hearing going to be held? And I can't even answer that question. So, this is moving so fast and requesting approvals with, I say, no respect to this council, and I'm really ticked off about it, especially as Chair of the, of the Site Plan Committee. You know, in the zoning that we had before, or the request, it states that, that a, a person could buy a piece of property, and, correct me if I'm wrong, and designate it under that same corporation to another piece of property on that parcel. And once he gets that license, it has to be licensed to a parcel, which I don't have.
Okay. Do you have anything to add?
I'll, I'll try.
We discussed this for a good amount of time already.
I know, I know. I just, a new element was added. We are not accepting applications for any medical marijuana facilities until November 4th. This application is for retail development only along Greenfield, and they can't officially submit the application until they have authorization from the owner, which is the city, to apply. Once the city council grants them the authorization to apply, then it will go through the normal process, department review, planning commissioner review, and then ultimately back to the council with, with plans. But they can't even apply without your authorization to apply. And we're only talking about the Greenfield frontage at this point, which was tied into the approval that the council gave them on August 5th for their due diligence as part of the purchase agreement. So, there was conceptual plans that were part of that purchase agreement that was authorized by council on August 5th, and once council, it was implied that they could seek any required approvals, but it wasn't implicitly granted for them to request an amendment to the ordinance. And that's what we're here for tonight. Once that is granted, I can accept the application. We'll move the process forward, and the council will see whatever site plans that they submit at that time.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep, Mr. Fracassi.
Along with the request was also a contract that was given to the city attorney to have reviewed to come back to council. That product, that contract, which, which state what these properties could be used for, under the also zoning, that we have not seen that revised contract. The contract's based on whether or not they get approval for those items that were listed, and marijuana was one of them, in your zoning document, or in the contract at least, that I see. So, I'm not going to give an open door to anybody that is not designated under the same corporation and let them be able to do what they want on that piece of property.
Mr. Brightwell.
The reason I'm speaking up on this is that I'm on the Northland Committee, and I am deeply involved in the procedure and the process of it. This is what I understand, right? It has nothing to do with medical marijuana. This is 100 percent retail, commercial retail, nothing to do with any scientific or anything, but this is all part of the process of getting them, moving the ball down the road. And the next step, council will be 100 percent involved in every, from a site plan standpoint, from a planning standpoint, of every nail that is being nailed on this particular property. I think it's what, I'm not sure how many acres it is, but it's not the full Northland. It's just a part of the, of the portion of Greenfield.
It's approximately 10 acres.
About approximately 10 acres. So, this is just a process of moving the ball down the road. Nothing will get past this particular point other than the fact that they can apply. And it's definitely not marijuana-related. It's by the gentleman who developed the 12 Mile Southfield, well, old, the church used to be. So, it's, they are professional individuals, and I'm sure they know how to get things approved and to walk things through our network of approval without mud being on their face, because obviously if something, they try to do something relatively underhanded, you know, that hurts their reputation entirely, entirely forever. But this particular gentleman and this organization is known to us as being one of the better developers in southeast Michigan. This is just procedural. Nothing will be, no nails, no, nothing will be dug once we approve. This is just a procedural process.
Mr. Chairman, again, all due respect, Mr. Counselman, that in that thing, there's a list of uses. The last item of that sentence, which I don't have with me, we talked about hotels, commercial, this and that, the last item that was mentioned was marijuana. Okay? If you read the contract, that's what it states, and I haven't seen it come back to us yet. And as far as I'm concerned, if a contract is even discussed as to And as far as I'm concerned, if a contract is even discussed as to reference to this corporation, I feel that I'm stepping out in front of this project, and I refuse to do that.
All right. So if there's nothing else from our council, we're going to entertain a motion on these two items.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item E on our consent agenda.
Support.
The move by Mr. Frazier, supported by Mr. Brightwell, that we approve item E on our consent agenda for this evening. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
And we have item G to be approved or voted on?
G is the other one.
Oh, he wants to, you, okay, go ahead. I'm sorry. I'm thinking, yes, yeah, I thought he was done, yeah. So we can take, we can take the motion.
This is for the redevelopment project area designations of the city center and the DDA to allow for an additional on-premise licenses under the Act.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve consent agenda item G.
Support.
The move by Ms. Moore, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we approve agenda item G, consent agenda item G. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
No.
Thank you.
All right. That completes our consent agenda item portion of the meeting. Moving on, council, let's see, oh, we've got to go through communications, I'm sorry. All right. So our first, under communications, our first individual asks to be recognized is Pamela Gerald. Our next individual asks to be recognized is Gerard Mullin. Our next individual to be recognized is Keith Harris.
How you guys doing today? All racing life matter, P.O. Box 2769, 48037. I'm tired today, but when I come up to this podium, I want people to understand that I'm not anti-Semitic, or I hate the Jews, or I'm against the LBGQ. What I want to see is a black agenda. My people, and I say my people, been marching for 60 years, and we have not moved up. You have thought of creative ways to still our homes, you have thought of creative ways to not invest money into our school system. I'll give you an example. When I come to this podium, I'm not bashing the teachers, I'm bashing the buildings. The buildings are raggy. We cannot build new condos before we build new schools. And I say again, we need to give, we, we, if you want to give tax abatements for the city, if you want to give county tax abatements, but you should never let our school taxes be abated. Our school taxes is what goes back into our kids. There should be an unabating school tax millage, which we're going to make that a part of the black agenda. You know, black lives matter, black homeownership matter, black education matter. And I'm all about getting along with everybody. I wish you had the time to know my story. I've had more good white people pick me up than I've had black people. That's real talk. When I thought I was a thug, a white priest raised me. And if it wasn't because of good black police officers out there who took me by the hand and lead me in the right direction. Like I said before, we need to put our priorities in the right perspective. Right now, we don't have that. We elect you guys to put our priorities first. Protect the homeowners, put the right people on the police department that's going to put our lives first, and then put our kids at the top of that line. Education. Thank you.
Our next request for recognition is Stacy Jackson.
21685 Rougewood Drive, Southfield, Michigan, 48033, and the name is Stacy Jackson. It's been about a week or two before I stepped to the lectern, but I'm here again tonight to express my concerns about the septic tank system. What I'd first like to do is refer you back to the moment where a resident stood here that indicated that she was a Holocaust survivor. And at that moment, one of our councilmen, Council Mandelbaum, who's not here today, removed himself from his councilman's chair and stood right next to that resident. In that defining moment, our councilperson spoke volumes to the city. In that moment, he showed the world, really, that before his public service, he held true to his heritage and his cultural beliefs and identity. I'm proud of him for that. My concern is that why is it cultures are able to have that type of strength and identity and courage, but it's only frowned upon when it's African-American? You see, disrespect can oftentimes be ruled as an unintended misunderstanding. Discrimination is something deliberate. It is what you do once the facts are presented to you. This council and this city is guilty of that with me. I have come here for over 365 days and virtually every Monday come here about this problem with the septic tank systems, and still nothing. I have watched as 19 white gas station owners could stand here, and they came here one time for the right to keep their ice boxes to store ice. I have watched as that same community that Mandelbaum stood up for came here one time about their mikvah. I have been here over 365 days about this issue that the city is fully aware of that affects thousands of residents. The last time I stood here, the city manager finally admitted that there had been various copies of this letter sent out to residents. At the end of his statement, he implied that I was ensuring he was a racist and that he did not know the color of the residents. I don't buy that. This city's entire economic forecast is based on data that tells us the cultural identity of the residents. It's so intrusive, it tells you the median income of the residents, the age of the residents. In fact, our mayor is even building condos for seniors based on this data. Everyone in this room knows that the cultural landscape of this city has changed. I feel invisible. And for those who are not African-American, that is the ultimate offense.
Our next request for recognition is Sonia Simpson Gardner.
Sonia Simpson Gardner, 30575 Old Stream Street. I am still coming before you with the same issue. I would like for this issue to not be redundant and to have to keep coming upon you with the same issue that I've come before you with, but it appears to me that you are not listening. So I think that I need to express what happened, and I will continue to express what happened, which is I acted as a mandated reporter. I protected a young lady against her father, who was a pedophile. So I am going to say that if you continue to protect a police department that is corrupt, then you're protecting a pedophile. So I have to express that. After I had my conversation with you last week, someone let the air out of my tire. But the God that I serve is a powerful God, because the following day, I got a letter from Groves High School stating that my daughter is going to be in the National Honor Society. So I've continued to say that I serve a powerful God. And good trumps evil. I will continue to pray for all of you and pray for the police department with hopes that you will open your eyes and do something about what is being done. So until something is done, I will continue to come and speak before you and attempt to help other women, men, or whoever else is going through the exact same thing instead of being ignored. I applied for the property tax credit when I was having some financial issues, and there were some very personal things that were placed in my file when I submitted a letter to Fred Zorn and Mike. No one responded back. I feel that I am a taxpayer and I'm treated very unfairly. Again, I will just have to say that you are supporting a pedophile if you continue to retaliate against me and not help me. I've done everything that I can possibly do, I've been as nice as I possibly can, I've not been rude, I've not used profanity, and I come before you to speak before you, and I feel like I'm being ignored. So again, I will say that good trumps evil, that I serve a powerful God, and I will continue to pray for all of you, and what happens in the dark will eventually come out in the light. And Mr. Cruz, I'm just going to have to end with saying that I'm just very disappointed with some of the things that have personally happened with city council and the fact that you guys are not helping me. Thank you.
Our next request for recognition is Macy O'Rhodes.
Macy O'Rhodes, I'm not giving out my address, I think that's stupid, but anyway. Last time I was here, we pretty much established that much of the leadership in Southfield, the so-called mayor, the former chief of police, the chair, isn't concerned with a mother and her daughter being systematically harassed by a pedophile that she tried to protect the daughter from. So that's already out there. What's interesting to me, however, is the chair isn't even interested in advocating for his own colleagues. I've seen Mr. Brightwell be attacked by a crazy woman from Farmington Hills, not Southfield, multiple times, thinking she's Johnny Cochran with exhibit A, B, C, and D, showing his campaign contributions from Resco that he already agreed to return. But yet he gets to be berated, nothing's done about it. Donald Ficassi, he was berated by some individuals here for over 20 minutes about an over-exaggerated septic tank issue that they even admitted to us. They haven't even heard or talked to anybody with this issue. They've never seen any of these three, four, five, $600 water bills that they go around talking about. But they were able to berate Mr. Ficassi for 20 minutes about nonsense. So again, I ask you, Mr. Cruz, why are you here if you're not going to advocate for the people or even your own colleagues? Is this just something to do on the side? You think you're going to run for state rep or senate or maybe even have his seat one day? Hopefully not, because the last thing we need in our community is more weak black male leadership, and that's what I see personally. It should be called out, but it won't, because unfortunately, Southfield, not really that politically active. Look how many people are here. The most group of men I've ever seen at these meetings was maybe eight guys who came here because they were upset about the damn golf course. Besides that, you'll get the same six guys talking about nothing, doing nothing, and that's why you're able to keep getting reelected, because people don't care about anything in this city. Even the so-called mayor, I've heard him be called homo, gay, Jewish, with a negative connotation, Zionist scum by somebody here, and nothing was done about it. Regardless of how I feel about him, that's unnecessary. How he got elected, different issue, but I digress. Have a nice evening.
Our next request for recognition is Anthony Martin.
Anthony Martin, 21025 Concord, Southfield, 48076, 31-year resident of Southfield, former president, vice president, and director for the Beacon Square Homeowners Association, current president of the Southfield Community Coalition of Homeowners, Conglamenting Associations, and that, and also a member of the planning commission. The Southfield Community Coalition had a candidate forum on Thursday, October 3rd, 2019. It was a private event not sponsored by the city. Karen Moon of the League of Women Voters stated that the League of Women Voters sponsored the 2019 candidate forum in the video leading to their September 23rd video posted on the Southfield Media Service, Cable 15. If the 73,000-plus Southfield residents can't view, can view the League of Women Voters forum, why aren't they being, why are they being denied the ability to review the Southfield Community Coalition candidate forum that was held October 3rd? The city administrators said in writing that it was not, that all Southfield council candidates were invited. Additionally, a candidate showed up during the event was denied the opportunity to speak. Not being invited or allowed to speak were matters of grave concern to the city, Southfield, due to the possibility of campaign finance violations and First Amendment rights. Therefore, the forum will not be replayed on Southfield Cable 15 or YouTube. To counter the issue of not being allowed to speak, I propose that the absent candidate be allowed to record their reply to the same questions with the same reply times given the candidates that were added to the program, that were, that were added, and be added to the program that was videotaped. That was suggested to the administrator and acknowledged as a good solution. No reply on that suggestion has been received as of yet. I would mention that the Southfield Community Coalition is neither a government entity nor a member, a part of government, so we have no, nothing to do with violation of the right to speak with First Amendment rights. And it's just not fair that one individual's complaint outweighs the 10 residents, the 10 compliment, the 10 candidates that were present, including three of the council members, and not being able to provide their television viewing audience, not being able to provide the community with their comments and review responses to questions asked. Thank you.
Our next request for recognition is Harold Hill.
Hello, council. Harold Hill, 760163, Southfield, Michigan, 48076. I'm glad to hear that during the work-study session that you've decided to talk about the septic tank issue. It's been an issue going on, they started, I guess, in 1999, but it really took charge in 2017 with a town hall, and it seems as though they did lower the tap-in fee to the Water and Sewer Department from $7,500 to $5,000, which is helpful. And I just heard that your average tie-in fees, or for some people, were only $10,000 to $30,000. But while campaigning, I found out that one person cost at Nine Mile and Inkster was $40,000, and they were being fined because they could not get a part within a certain amount of time, and they were ended up in court and got fined several times. And during the arbitration, they signed their way their rights, but Oakland County had come in and assessed the situation and found out that they didn't see the problem of the septic tank issue. They just didn't see it. So this, they had already dug the trenches, waiting for the part, and so now they are stuck with a $40,000 bill that's on the tax rolls, and that shouldn't happen. We do have business people that are trying to figure out how to help in this area because it's been going on for quite some time. I mean, 2017, they had town halls, and it seems like the only time we bring it up is, and I hate to say it, during election year. We really started making headway, but it's something that is costing people a lot of money. If you took, and I started this conversation a while ago, if you looked at the thousand people that have the septic tank issue and it's over that, and the average cost of their homes, that's at $200,000, that's $200 million. And so that's a lot. And if you're talking about an average of $20,000 to $40,000 the cost, it's something that can't be paid by a lot of citizens. People will lose their homes, and they didn't move to Southfield to lose their homes. So I think we need to come up with the solutions. There's things out there and some business people that are looking at things a little bit closer. Hopefully, we can get that done. Thank you.
Our next request for recognition is Toby Rhodes.
Toby Rhodes, 17001 New Jersey, 248-56-
Toby Rhodes, 17001 New Jersey, 248-569-7189. First thing I wanted to say was that what happened to her clerk was some dirty stuff. I mean, that was the first time you had a black clerk in the city of Southfield, and I was kind of curious to see how the first election, local election, would turn out. And of course, before she even has a chance to even administer the election, magically these charges come out of nowhere. Now, I'm not saying the black community supports her, but I know when a black person's getting set up. I mean, six felonies after one election? And who in the world brought them stupid charges? The Attorney General, and what is she? She's a pervert. And then you have the Secretary of State, that's a Becky. And then you had Oakland County, more racist trash. And then you look at the city of Southfield, and you guys just ran away from her. And that just goes to show, all you black people thinking that you're kumbaya and we are, are the world your way through life, when they, when, when Mr. Charlie gets sick of you, he's going to break you, just like they're going to break her. Because no matter if, if she's absolutely exonerated of everything, they put her picture in every freaking paper. I mean, it was like she got arrested Monday, and like that Monday or Tuesday, her picture was everywhere. And it's funny how they always criminalize black people. It's like a racist trash and the police will murder somebody, and then they won't put his picture in the face, but they'll just talk about the black person. But if a black person's accused, they put the black person's face in it, and then, and then won't talk about, about the victim, the black man did this. But this time, they got a black woman. And I think she's the highest-paid elected, black elected official in the city of Southfield. And of course, they go right after her without any permission from any black person in the city, I mean, in Southfield. No black community give the Attorney General any permission to, and I filed a complaint against the homosexual attacking me when I went to vote, vote. Now, why don't they charge him with some felonies? I mean, he actually attacked me and had me thrown in jail for going to vote. But the city attorney, and they admitted that she didn't commit any crime, I mean, didn't affect any result. So how in the world is it a result, and then I know that the, how does it result six? That's just pilot, that's just being a punk. Then they got this Oak Park, uh, uh, um, judge, and I've had dealings with her, and she's a scumbag. So they got a Becky to judge her, a Becky to accuse her, so they can rig a jury, they got a whole bunch of Beckys to convince, it's some crap. Anyway, the other thing I want to mention about the deputy chief, he's a murderer, and I got the court case. It's Judge Omira, so anybody can look it up, case number 06-13189. And it says, "This case involves the unfortunate death of Christian Kelly as the result of being run over by a police vehicle operated by Detective Officer Murderer of the city of Southfield." So, yeah, the black police chief, he's surrounded by a homosexual who don't want him here, the city administrator who don't want him here, and a murderer who don't want him here.
Toby Rhodes, Toby. We're not using this inflammatory language in here.
I've got the court case, right here.
You're calling a name.
He is a murderer. He killed somebody.
No.
It doesn't bring his life back just because you say he's not a murderer. He's still dead.
I didn't say, I didn't say that.
His life is gone, thanks to the deputy chief.
Yeah, your time is up. Our next request for recognition is Louis Williams.
Louis Williams, good evening.
Good evening.
Evening.
I'd like to express my continued opposition to the plan to sell a portion of the Northland property to a marijuana grow business for the purpose of selling medical marijuana. My wife and I have lived in Southfield for twenty-seven years, and until this situation developed, we had not heard about any talk of wanting to bring a marijuana business into Southfield for medical purposes or otherwise. It just seems, you know, a little strange that all of a sudden, it's such a great idea for this great city to have a marijuana grow business in it. I have not, I, I read the paper and I watch the news on a pretty regular basis, I have not heard about other communities clamoring to have a marijuana grow business in their I, I think of cities like Birmingham and Farmington Hills. If this is such a great idea, why aren't they asking that it come to them? Southfield is considered by many as the family city, the all-American city. We don't want it to be known as the marijuana city. We don't want it here, and we are asking that it not be brought here. I am sure that the City Council is aware of the great opposition to this plan, as evidenced at the last City Council meeting. I'm asking the City Council to really reconsider your vote and that you vote to sell that part of Northland to a, a, a different business. The city may not make as much money on the sale, but I think the citizens would be happier and safer. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next request for recognition is Greg Keeler. Our next request for recognition is Yolanda Haynes.
Yolanda Haynes, 24501, Council. I just wanted to speak on behalf of the Oakland Community College. I'm not sure if the gentleman is still here, but I'm in support of it, Millidge, because over the years, I've had my children attend OCC in different areas. My son received a scholarship while he was in high school and being homeschooled at OCC years ago, many, many years ago. And he mentioned several colleges, but he didn't mention Wayne State. My daughter has just received a scholarship from Wayne State, and she left, she's not finished, but she did some classes at OCC first because she wasn't sure what she wanted to do, because she had so many things she was involved in. And she's transferring to Wayne State on a scholarship. And OCC has been good to my kids, and I support what they're doing. And also, there, she received a intern with a teacher there and developed a lasting friendship and a relationship that has helped her in some of her career choices and the things that she wants to do. So I know that's, that's just my children, but there are other families out there, even homeschool families, that have benefited from Oakland Community College. And I think that it's very important that we continue to support community colleges that support our families and adults as well, and our children. Just wanted to say that.
All right, thank you. Our next request for recognition is Latina Denson.
Thank you. My name is Latina Denson. Last year, I, I created and directed a segment on Southfield's, um, Southfield's, um, play, um, first of all, I had, I had a stroke, so be patient with my speech. I have aphasia and aprasia, which impairs my speech, so be patient. Last year, I created and directed a segment on Southfield's, um, count, um, cable state, Cable 15 called Unlimited, Share Your Story. Unlimited highlights people who had experiences with physical, mental, and, and health issues. The staff, uh, staff at Cable 15 and I were overwhelmed by the Facebook, um, view, views. It was, um, in the thousands. I interviewed people with, with, with all types of disabilities, like strokes, MS, lupus, chronic, um, chronic depression, and also organizations that offer free or low-cost prescriptions, including insulin. I noticed that the segments were not being shown. I, I thought that it was because of the hectic schedule of the, the, um, the summertime. Only to not, only to find out that a person complained that they were seeing too much of me in, on the station. So they, so the city stopped showing my, um, my, um, segments. I am a, first, a resident, and secondly, an active resident. I am on the planning commission once a month, so you're going to stop that? What about the COSA events? I am on the board, and I, um, prepare, I mean, I participate on all of their, um, events, so you're going to stop that too? Recently, I have participated in forums. You're going to stop that too? I'm disappointed that once, one person can stop a show, literally. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our communication. Oh, Mr. President?
Respond to that.
Go right ahead.
Ms. Denson.
Yes.
The fact that your program wasn't, hasn't been shown is because you're a candidate for election, and we have a rule that was established several years ago that when a, when a candidate or when a resident files for election, they cannot be, they can't have a program on Cable 15 while they're running for election. So it's not that we're picking on you. That rule was established several years ago. But the other things that you were talking about, about attending events and, and all that, that's fine. We have no problem with that at all. But there were people that, years ago, that were using Cable 15 as an opportunity to get their message out to the people that was unfair to the other candidates. So that's why we had the, that's why we had the, uh, the rule established. So, uh, once the election is over, uh, then, uh, as far as I know, your programs can be shown again. But during the campaign season, that's been a rule for several years, not, it wasn't anyone that's picking on you especially.
Okay. And thank you, and thank you for that information, because I was not told that.
Okay.
And I, I suspected that, but I didn't know. However, my image is not shown.
Doesn't matter. We, we just made that rule. You can't have a program on Cable 15 during, if you're a candidate for office, for elected office during that period of time. So.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
It's your thing. And I apologize for anyone that didn't clarify that with you ahead of time.
It, it's just that the people who really, um, thought that the, um, the Unlimited was a good program, and now it has not been shown for months and months. And, and I, I mean, I completed several interviews, and they're, they're waiting on it to be shown too.
Well, when the, when the election is over, then the rules change.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? Sure.
All right, we'll now move to the council portion of our meeting. Mr. Brightwell.
Chairman. Yes. As the, as the former chairman of the Southfield Veterans Commission from 2004 to 2005, I will, 2004 to 2015, I periodically bring forth information here. Uh, and I want the veterans out there who are listening, and also the individuals who might be listening, if you know a veteran, you know someone who has a veteran in their family. Uh, the VA puts on some very good, um, events, and they have some very good programs, so pass this information on. It might not be applicable to you directly, but it might be applicable to those that you know. The VA just recently finished a, an aggressive study of VA loan funding fees, and they have, they found, there were some clerical errors, and they have missed, they have issued four hundred million dollars in refunds to individuals who, uh, who had applied for loans or got a VA home loan within the last, let's say, twenty years. So, uh, if you have got a VA loan within the last twenty years, call this number and see whether or not you qualify to get a VA funding fee refund. That's like a fee that, an application fee. The number will be 888, I'm sorry, 877-827-3702. And you can mention the VA funding refu, refund fee. I will have this, will be written, written and be out there in the bookcase for, under VA information. The next item that might be of interest to some who are veterans, uh, the VA is, has one of the more, the largest hospital, uh, research, uh, entities in the, in the entire world, really. They are currently now, they have, they're, they're trying to get one million veterans to enroll in this particular program. They currently have seven hundred and seventy-five veterans enrolled in the gene study to determine how genes affect the health of veterans. Uh, but this will deal with, it will take a look at how genes affect diabetes, PTSD, uh, cancer, heart, heart disease, and also how it, it affects PTSD. And one other significant, uh, quality of this particular study of seven hundred and seventy-five thousand individuals who are veterans is that it is the largest minority cohort group in the country that's actually studying minorities. Uh, so this will take a look at the genes and how it, it affects veterans, and veterans who have been in combat, and it's a, it's a full-blown study. If you would like to participate in this program, they currently have seven hundred and seventy-five thousand individuals, but this number for this particular program is And feel free to give me a call if you want further information, but definitely stop by the front desk, and there will be a sheet that have the write-up on both these, uh, particular items. Thank you.
Mr. Ficassi.
Mr. Chairman, we have a scheduled meeting on the, on Thursday. I'd like to have that changed to a date, and I guess that's your job, but, but we have a lot of meetings to meet that same day, from morning to night, and if you could give some of us the chance to meet all our commitments, now that, but it's a very important item you have on the agenda.
Counsel, if we have any objections, this is for Terry's, Terry Crowe's evaluation to postpone it to a date uncertain, and we'll figure it out at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Yep, okay. Ms. Morris?
Yes, last week, Wednesday and Thursday, I got an opportunity to travel to the International Council of Shopping Centers Chicago Dealmakers Conference, and I had a chance to meet with various brokers and developers. to meet with various brokers and developers, uh, trying to understand how they implement their expansion plans and, and, uh, make decisions on, uh, how they invest, uh, in certain cities, and, uh, it was a wonderful learning opportunity for me. I also, um, uh, attended lots of workshops and learned about new things such as ghost kitchens and, and food halls, and, and so I'm just thankful that, um, I went to the conference with Al Acevis, he's the director of our DDA, and Rochelle Freeman, uh, Business and Economic Development Director. Just thankful that they, uh, coordinated some of those meetings with me, and, uh, really look forward to, um, moving forward in a direction of, uh, economic development initiatives in the future. Thank you.
Yep, Mr. Frazier?
Yes, I would just, uh, like to make a public announcement that, uh, the event yesterday was wonderful, and I'll leave it at that.
What kind of event was it, Myron?
Pardon me?
What kind of event was it, Myron?
It was a, a tribute to, uh, public service.
Some guy next to me. We're very proud of-
We'll leave it at that.
We're very proud of your family and everything you've done for the city. I mentioned it many times, but I just want to say it one more time.
Yep. I just want to say, too, for everybody, so, um, since we will postpone Terry's, um, evaluation, I still want to make sure it's done before the election because I think it's only fair that it be evaluated by those of us that have been working with him as opposed to new council members coming on. So, just make sure you have calendars with you on Monday so we can nail down a date and time for sure, and get this taken care of, okay? Thank you.
Through the chair, um, I think a motion needs to be made to change the meeting.
We do.
Yes.
Go.
She can't make a motion.
I, I believe it's been, we assume it's been moved by Mr. Focasie. And supported by Mr. Brightwell that we postpone the evaluation of the city planner to a date uncertain. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we'll discuss this on Monday evening, next Monday evening. All right, Mr. Mayor? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Taylor?
I just want to make one announcement. Uh, the police department is having a trunk or treat for our children for, uh, Halloween. Can't get much safer than that, where they'll have the trunks of the, uh, police cars open with, and filled with candy, so all of the residents that have small children, or some of us big children, that still like trick-or-treating, please come out on Thursday, October 31st, from six to eight PM, right at the, uh, Southfield Municipal Campus, at the police department. So please bring your children dressed in costumes, and, uh, you'll see the police in a different light. I guess I should say spooky light. Thank you.
All right. All right, Mr. Mayor?
I have before you, um, uh, in late September, I traveled to the, um, uh, MML Falk Conference, um, and I limited my expenses to the registration.
Uh, Mr. Mr. President?
Yeah, Mr. Frazier.
I move that we approve the expense report for, uh, the mayor for attending a Michigan Municipal League Convention in Detroit.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Frazier, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we approve the expense report for Mayor Cyver's attendance at the Michigan Municipal League Convention. All those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? All right. Any other things for us this evening?
Other items, uh, on last Thursday, uh, we had our kickoff meeting for the 2020 census. Um, and I'm very pleased to report that, um, I tapped certain people in the community, like the schools, LTU, the ministerial association, and others, but, um, sororities, uh, and fraternities, and other individuals, uh, neighborhood presidents have come forward. So we, um, there's no exclusive membership, uh, to this, uh, committee. Uh, we are working on, um, getting a complete count. Uh, in two thousand ten, Southfield had only a seventy-eight percent return, uh, on the census. We want to do better than that as, um, our, uh, funding, uh, not only for, uh, city, city dollars for roads and, um, Community Development Block Grant, but also our hospitals, uh, benefit from local census count, as well as, um, number of social service agencies, and of course, a representation at the county, state, and federal level. Um, so the committee will continue to meet through March, um, as we, uh, work to publicize this event, and, uh, our next meeting will be in November, and we will be looking at the, uh, although things change, we will be looking at the, uh, areas where we had low participation, uh, in the, in two thousand ten. On another item tonight, uh, and I'm gonna ask, um, the Friends of the Library. Uh, this is a very last-minute, um, proclamation, but, uh, I am declaring as mayor of City of Southfield, um, Friends of the Library Week for October 20th to 26th, and whereas Friends of the Southfield Public Library believe that the knowledge and information are, that knowledge and information are vital to the quality of life for all residents, and whereas Friends of the Southfield Public Library, uh, are a dynamic and involved group of library supporters who truly enhance the services the library is able to provide, and whereas the Friends of the Southfield Public Library raise money that enables our library to move from good to great, providing the resources for additional programming, much-needed equipment, uh, support for, uh, children's summer reading, uh, program, special events throughout the year, uh, they help our library succeed. Whereas Friends of the Southfield Public Library sponsor library programs and special events such as Jazz and Blues at Your Library, Battle of the Books, the Spell Bowl, and many more. And whereas, uh, the work of the Friends highlights on, on an ongoing basis the fact that our library is the cornerstone of the community, providing opportunities for all to engage in the joy of lifelong learning and connect, uh, with the thoughts and ideas of others from ages past, uh, to present, and whereas the Friends understand the critical importance of well-funded libraries and advocate to ensure that our library gets the resources it needs to provide a wide variety of services to all ages, including access to print and electronic materials, along with expert assistance in research, readers advisory, and children's services. And whereas the Friends' gift of their time and commitment, uh, to the library sets an example for all in how volunteerism leads to positive civic engagement and the betterment of our community. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Kenton Cyver, mayor of City of Southfield County, Brooklyn State of Michigan, do hereby proclaim, uh, October 20th to 26th, nine, uh, two thousand nineteen, as Friends of Libraries Week in the City of Southfield.
All right. Very good. Congratulations.
And, um, we do have an event that Ms. Hayes, Haynes, rather, would like to share.
My name is Yolanda Haynes, and I wanted to say thank you. I know it was last minute, but the Friends of the Library is the five oh one C three portion of the Southfield Public Library, where a hundred percent of our proceeds go to the library. Our main, uh, fundraisers are membership, which we invite you all to join us as well, and we have a book sale that we have monthly, and every once in a while, which is this week, we will have a bag of books sale. In addition to that, we also have a Jazz and Blues at the Library, which we sponsor once a month. In addition to that, we have special events, uh, as, with the Jazz and Blues, that Don will give you a little bit of information about. We wanted to bring attention to that because a lot of times people don't know who we are and what we do, and mainly because it's important that our dollars continue to help the library. Uh, we were, uh, one of the donors for the, uh, Boy and Bear at the library, and also several things, computers, different things that the library at one point did not have the money for. So we also take used books, gently-used books, and sell those to the community, and sometimes people aren't able to buy those books at other places but can get them at an nominal fee. Give an example, a Michelle Obama book goes for like thirty or forty dollars somewhere, somebody can come for, to us and get it for two or three dollars, and that's a gem to people in our community. So I'll say no more, but we have an event this week, uh, this Wednesday, it's an open house, basically just to tell you more information about what we do. It is open to members and non-members with addition, with a cost of ten dollars, and the ten dollars give you the membership, a general year membership to the Friends, so it's just an addition to helping you learn more about us. I'll give Don a chance to talk about what we do. Don is the guy that got me involved with the Friends a long time ago, and he was the, the president at the time, and he's actively, actively involved, so let him talk.
Hi, my name is Don McGee, and, uh, when I see a microphone, I want to talk about my favorite subject, which is music. Uh, Jazz and Blues at the Library is now in its fifteenth year. Uh, we've done a hundred and eighty-two different programs, and, uh, we feature local jazz and blues bands and solo artists occasionally. Some you may have heard of, uh, Kimmy Horn, uh, she was, uh, our, our June feature, um, Alexander Zancheck, and, uh, Thornetta Davis, uh, she's billed as Detroit's Queen of the Blues. And then somebody you may not have heard of, but is a very important person musically, a man named Billy Davis, who lives in Southfield, and he is, he is a member of the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame. He was, he's been to our, our program twice. Um, last year we had over a hundred, an average of over a hundred people attending the concerts, and, uh, this year, we're down a little bit, it's a hundred and eighty. I want to tell you about who's coming up next, November, the twentieth, Alvin Waddles. Has anybody ever heard of Alvin Waddles? He's music director of Hope United Methodist Church and New Bethel Baptist as well. He's pianist, does jazz and, and gospel, and he's an incredible entertainer. So I invite you all to attend that, excuse me. Uh, and, uh, I also invite you, if you're not already a member of the Friends of the Library, you ought to be a member because, uh, the Friends do a lot of things, as, as she suggested, that help support things that the library's budget doesn't allow for. So your membership, your annual membership would help us do that. And if you become a member, I'll give you a free pass, pass to a concert in the future as well. I think that's, that's about it. Uh, again, uh, I don't have applications for membership with me tonight, but I can come back and catch you at some other time. She does. Okay. So thanks for the time, and again, I urge you all to, uh, visit our series. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Frazier?
Yes, uh-
Before you guys get away, hold on.
You, uh, Yolanda, you said that the event was on Wednesday, but you didn't give the hours.
Oh, I have a flyer, I didn't want to give all the time, but, um, it's on, it's October the twenty-third, from four thirty to eight thirty, at the meeting room in the Southfield Public Library. The information should also be on the website, and it's also on Eventbrite. You can register on Eventbrite, or you can go into the library and buy a ticket. If you are already a member of the Friends, you can show your card, or just let us know that you're coming as well, so we can receive you. Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, and you should have a flyer.
Mr. Brightwell?
I just want to mention, it's many years that I've known Ms. Haynes. I've been a member.
No, your mic's not on.
Yep.
I want to mention, as many years I've known Ms. Haynes, I've been a member. She made sure I was a member when I first met her.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Taylor?
Thank you.
Before you leave, as a former member of the library board, I just want to say thank you. I know how important the Friends of the Library are, and I also am aware of all the things that you do, and as a former libor, library board member and a resident of Southfield, I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. And I wanted to also mention that we have volunteers that I want to thank, too. There are people that volunteer their time, clean books, swap book, price books, they do everything, so it's not just me and Don. There are several people that come in, take their time out of their day, and do everything, load, unload the books on the dock and all of that. These are dedicated people, and we could always, uh, use more dedicated people. Thank you very much.
Is there, is there an age limit?
Um, I would say, high school is fine, we have to, um, speak with them and talk to them, there's not, there's, uh, we don't really have an age limit, because we have people that are-
Would you exempt a twelve-year-old?
With, we probably would have supervision with a twelve-year-old because of such a young age, because I know my kids have been there twelve, too, so I won't say that. I'd be willing to come in if they're willing to work. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Focasie? Having been involved in the building of the library, I'd like to take this moment to thank all the work that everybody has done to make our library a success.
Yes, and, and, and we, we thank Dave, too, Demato, or the saying that the library has, is we help, um, people succeed, and we say we help the library succeed. So we all work together because the library in itself is a community hub in the city of Southfield, where lots of people come, and they learn, they grow, they do sort of things that you can't get other places. And I would like to say, some of the programs that we have, if you take them outside of the library, they would cost lots of money to attend, and it would be ticketed events that some people could not hardly ever afford or even get to. So thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, do you have anything else for us this evening? All right, thank you. Mr. Zorn?
Yes, uh, Mr. President, I have on the agenda tonight an amendment agreement, uh, to purchase real estate, uh, with the Northland Renaissance Place Development, the former Northland Mall. Uh, with us tonight is Al Acevis and Steve Palms from Miller Canfield. The item's rather straightforward. I apologize that this was a last-minute addition to the agenda. I'm requesting that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign the proposed amendment. The amendment, uh, actually requires that the purchaser be responsible for all costs associated in the basement work, uh, in particular the due diligence work that, uh, needs to be done on this project. The proposed scope of basement work includes the installation of temporary lighting and power, repair start of HVAC systems to, uh, to provide proper ventilation, investigate, uh, existing electrical systems, substations, address electrical issues, safety concerns, cleanup and removal of debris, investigate existing sanitary and storm lift stations, investigate, uh, sanitary and storm lines, and field measuring of spaces. Mr. Palms from Miller Canfield is here. This item's also been reviewed by the city attorney.
Are there any questions from council on this?
Mr. Chairman, where are we going with this? This is the amendment to the agreement to purchase the real estate?
With Nor- Northland Renaissance Group? This is, earlier you were discussing the Greenfield property, this is the remainder-
Why don't we have backup material on this? I mean, you're, you sit on that board-
The actual agreement is attached to this?
You sit on that board, all right, and there's seven members here, and you put stuff on this agenda, uh, along with a ton of other things, and I get tired of that. I'm tired of not getting the information to be able to make a, a-
Mr. President, the full agreement is attached to the-
Yes.
-package.
A plan on this, or say a yes or no. I mean, you know, we're part of those teams supposedly. I get tired of that. It doesn't have to be on with all this stuff that you got all over here. You don't discuss it beforehand, you just had a discussion in the back room, we didn't take it up. That was supposed to be a study. I'm against it. I'm getting tired of that, Fred.
Any other comments or questions on this?
Mr. President?
Mr. Frazier?
I move that we approve the amended, amended agreement to purchase the real estate as presented by the city administrator.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Frazier, supported by Mr. Brightwell, that we amend, uh, that we vote to approve the amendment to agree to purchase real estate with Northland Renaissance Place Development. Are there any other comments?
I don't support, I don't support the development, so I'm gonna vote against it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I still would like to know what are we voting on?
They're gonna do some work in the underground?
Yeah.
Yeah. But we're talking about a development. We don't know what the development is. If you're going underground, you have also a project on the table.
They're cleaning it up, they're cleaning it up, and making sure-
Now, but the proposal that's before us is at the same time, is, is a sale of it in its present condition. All right? So you're spending money and cleaning it up, that's part of the negotiations.
They're gonna spend the money.
Well, irrespective, irrespective, what part of the nine million is that?
None.
Okay.
None.
My word, I understand that. All right, I understand what's going on, but how much is that gonna cost the city?
Nothing. They, they are obliged-
They're not going to put up the amount of money that that 83 acres is worth to pick up something that we can't afford to take care of? In other words, you figure on that is something like, what, $10 million to clean it up? I think that's what the estimate was?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So, so what I'm trying to say is, you're talking about money. The city is either saving or giving to the developer as part of this sale.
We're, we're saving the money because we're not spending city money to clean up the underground. They're, they're taking, well...
But what would it be worth if the city cleaned it up?
$10 million.
What?
It cost us $10 million to, to completely clean up the underground and, and tear down the buildings.
And we're talking with that whole price, probably around $18 to $20 million that we have invested in. And I'm trying to say is, you got, you got the palace up there, that one of our people who have their offices here, this city, are paying for 26 acres, $36 million. All right? I like to see comparisons of figures. Sit here and make decisions on what we're going to give away and not give away, and costs of this. I mean, yes, the steering committee listens to this stuff. I don't have a darn thing on it. So all I see is a budget that's about, what, three years old now? Is that had a new budget? It's some, some of that stuff is 174% over budget? 200% over budget?
Excuse me.
And we're making, making decisions on things that are before us that are over budget already?
There are items that are, are over budget, but I, I like to qualify that. The budget was established back in January of 2016. It was a month after the city had closed on the property. We were unaware of that time, of all of the issues, including the asbestos abatement, that we had to deal with. And as a result, what we should have done, and we haven't done, and we didn't do, was amend the budget to reflect the cost. That's why you see certain items that are over budget right now. But the city still has uncommitted funds of approximately $8.2 million. This purchase and sales agreement, I just want to be clear, does not commit the city to selling the property. The purchase and sale agreement allows either party to get out of the transaction. All it really is doing is allowing them to do due diligence. That's why there's not a site plan, Councilman Frikasi, because they're still in their due diligence phase. Once they are done with their due diligence, they will prepare a site plan. And I think Terry has given them a drop dead date of early November. And that's, at that point in time, you will have before you what they're planning to do. Now, they've talked to us about hotels. They've talked to us about some additional retail, a big box. They've talked to us about hotels. But they have to go through their due diligence in order to get to that point. So the amendment tonight reflects allowing them to continue their due diligence. Again, it's not a binding document right now. Perhaps the title, purchase and sale agreement, reflects that it is. But understand that it allows each party to get out of the transaction. Now, if you were to, if this, if this deal went, went away, and you wanted to demo the building, you would have to find an additional $10 million to do that. Just the top, that's leaving the tunnels in the ground. So by virtue of these two deals, plus potentially the dealership, and plus potentially a little bit of acres for Providence Hospital, and Providence Hospital hasn't finalized their plans with us, the city will get their money back. You will get your $20 million that you originally proposed in your budget. So that is one of the upsides of this. So I think that ultimately, when this is all said and done, and things move in the direction that they're moving in, you will have a site plan that the council will be able to vote on. You'll understand all the components of it. You will get your $20 million back, which you will then go put back into your, into your savings account, and you will get out of the development business. So, yes, the budget is, is a little disproportionate right now, but that's the reason why.
Let me, Mr. Chairman, Al, let me just say this to you. You manage the DDA. And you've been in on all the meetings, all the discussions, all decisions that were made. All right?
Yes.
And I can only say, as one councilperson, that everything you said, they do not know. All right? We haven't had a budget that's been balanced, which I don't get. And I keep bringing it up every meeting that I was on a steering committee. We, I told you from the very bidding, I'd like to know, beginning of it, is what the pros say is FSS, fill, see, sell, and get out of there. We would have spent the $12 million. But you've gone that route, and I'd like to know what route you're going on. As a person that does development all over the place, I, I wouldn't allow anybody to give me some data like you're giving me and say, I'll make a decision on it.
Well, I, I believe we provide you the financial statements on a monthly basis. I believe...
I provided a budget in minutes so far, since I left the board.
Right, the, the budget in minutes, right. We provide the council to that. Now, the $12 million, as an example, when we first established the budget, we didn't realize that we had to go out and purchase the old Montgomery Ward Auto Bay until we found out that they had a 1,300-acre parking easement. We didn't realize that we were going to go into a separate transaction for the JCPenney's. Those are examples of items that we were unaware of when the council approved the original budget. Now, as I said, we probably should have amended it as we were going along, but we haven't. But we're still, you still have money in your account. I guess that's the bottom line.
Al, the sale of Northland Theater, whatever negotiations were held. See, I was on the steering committee. I wasn't, I didn't know anything about the negotiations, which left, which left Providence without parking? And now they have to come and take and buy parking from the Northland District? That didn't come to a council. That didn't come to me. That was on the committee. That was done over lunch or somewhere. And I'm getting tired of this, Maloney.
I'll be very truthful with you, Councilman Frikasi. Providence has a lot of work to do internally.
Pardon?
Providence Hospital has a lot of work to do internally. I think that there is a disconnect between the doctors and the hospital in Ascension.
Yeah.
Right?
I didn't even know when they, when the San Diego group backed out. And I don't know if the council members know that.
We were, we were very surprised by that, because we were given certain dates that they were going to commit to P and B. And then that extended into, to January. And then before you knew it, Joe Hershey and his team came in and says, "The doctors aren't willing to move over." So there's been a number of missteps. And, and, you know, I still think that while the hospital has indicated they're going to do something, there's still a question mark, in my mind. So hopefully, this promotion that Joe has gotten to the chief operating officer as Ascension will help that progress.
Yeah, I, I'm trying to argue here, but, you know, even the negotiation for the penny store, you know, we negotiated, nobody knew how much asbestos was that. When you finally get hired somebody to check that out, it's loaded with asbestos. That was not part of the negotiations to, to hand out one or the other? Nobody can buy a piece of property not know easements and negotiations and asbestos. Nobody. You'll buy a house that way.
The easements were, were a bit of a challenge, but I think we have those under control right now. We're working on identifying new easements, which we'll need for, for public infrastructure. But I think there was a lot of disdain on this part of the table, meaning the city, with what Providence did. They actually held up progress for about a year.
You know, when I was mayor, I set up the DDA. The DDA was never supposed to be the group. It's supposed to bring items to the council so they could make whatever direction they want to go. It was not to make decisions and then to tell council, "We made a decision, you abide by it." And that's what's happening in a lot of cases, as far as I'm concerned. And I've never seen anything, all the time I've been on council or mayor or anything else, things just were snowballed through. And I don't like it. And I want to tell you, I don't like it. I don't have the opportunity at times, because I, I just don't see anything that went in the past. We built the town center. Everybody knew. Everybody knew. Everybody came together. We knew exactly what they were going to do. We changed, we changed the atrium from an ice, ice rink to an atrium. Every, but council, you're part of it.
Well, I...
And with the first 35-story building built in the suburbs. Everybody was part of it. It's a team. Council runs this city.
I, I would tell you that we were operating in good faith with the hospital. The hospital was not operating in good faith with us. And what became very apparent to me was that the doctors controlled the hospital. The doctors will decide where they want to go, when they want to go, and how they want to do it.
But you have to take that into consideration as part of what you're doing. But you're always going to run into situations, and you have to adjust to them. You know? But when you adjust, everybody ought to know how you're going to make the adjustment. What are you going to do? What are you trading back and forth? What are you doing back and forth?
That was a hard lesson that we learned.
I see the site plan and the mayor's whatever story. I don't mean to take it up on the mayor, because that's fine. I read that all the time. I like it. But, but here's a whole, you know, layout of, I think, I've never seen it. I don't ever, any of these council people have ever seen it. Showed a hotel and this and that. You didn't see it?
I, I believe that when we were dealing with Joe Hershey, we were dealing with the right person. I think that we learned the hard way that the relationship isn't what we thought it was. And even now, we're still waiting for some information from them to get, get moving on their purchase agreement. And, you know, the city needs the hospital. And I think that we're going to do our best to get them moving as quick as we can.
But the things that were moved tonight have eroded to the people who are interested in buying it. I mean, all the things that are asked for council to approve have either benefit or not a benefit to whoever is purchasing the property. And that's a part of, if it's part of the negotiations, it's up to the city council to say what's changed in the contract. That, that now makes it a great deal or not a great deal? And I didn't even hear about the $9 million thing until it was already a contract, it was a contract.
Well, I think we're anxious to bring the final plans before you, because we want to get this deal done.
But not according to the planner.
You know, I know he's got a process that he's got to go through. And so we're going to respect that. We're going to follow it through. And as soon as we can bring everything before you, the sooner the better for everybody.
All right, thanks. I think you're good. All right. I think we had a motion on the floor.
Mm-hmm.
So I think it was moved by, was it Mr. Frazier?
No.
Oh. Supported by Mr. Brightwell. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed?
No.
No.
Okay. We have Ms. Morrison, Mr. Frikasi.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a few other items here. On tomorrow night, October 22nd, in our Parks and Rec Building, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., as part of our Community Development Block Grant in conjunction with Oakland County, we'll be conducting a fair housing survey. I'm going to distribute surveys to the council to take a look at. And if you want to complete those, that would help out. That is part of our five-year plan as part of Community Development Block Grant, which we submit with Oakland County. I want to address lead in water. Let the community know that our water samples, all 30 samples, came back clean, good. We passed. And much of that is the 20-year-plus history of the city in removing the lead lines when we find them. Again, I'd still really like to have enabling legislation from the state of Michigan to allow us to do that. But when a homeowner volunteers and allows us to do that, when we find those lead lines, we have been replacing them. And my staff feels real confident that the majority of those lead lines have been removed. And across the country, lead in our water seems, you know, continues to be a real challenge. Three of our neighboring communities did not pass those tests, but Southfield did. I also want to speak to, a primary component of my job as city administrator is risk assessment. And unfortunately, there was the Neighborhood Services candidate forum. And it came to the administration's attention that one, that one candidate was not invited. And when that came to our attention, that brought to concern regarding campaign finance violations, in particular, violations of First Amendment rights. So as city administrator, I did instruct Cable 15 not to air that tape any further. It did air the first night. The other item I wanted to speak to was Dr. Denson's remarks. I, I love the concept of the show that she's doing. I think that's exactly what, you know, the peg, or the public education component of Cable's intended to do. But as stated, I did, my office did receive a complaint regarding the airing of that show this close while the individual is a candidate. There's the council action that Councilman Frazier referenced. But the, it could also, to continue airing that, could put the city at risk for campaign finance violations. So to, you know, to be on the side of caution, you know, protect the city. And my staff insists that Ms. Denson was told that. And so I, I don't want to get into an exchange, but I'd rather be cautious and protect the city. The, the city had no control of that Neighborhood Services. We weren't the entity that invited people or anything. I don't know exactly what happened, and I'm not going to investigate it. I don't think that's our role. But we will not show it. The recording has not been destroyed. I've had several people suggest it should be destroyed. We do not destroy things. This is in the public domain, and there is a way that that can be obtained. I appreciate people understanding this, but again, we've got to protect the, our, the citizens at large. And the fact that one person may have been, you know, not had that opportunity, that, that is of concern. I have no other matters this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zorn. Yes, Ms. Taylor?
Can I just ask, this, okay, you said one person. Do we know for a fact that that person wasn't invited? Or is it just that they may not have been?
I, I, I've been told that she was, the, the person showed up and, at, near the end, and was not invited, and that the individual asked to speak at the time while it was being taped, and was denied that opportunity.
Okay.
But how would the opportunity be recorded at a separate time?
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Yes. Okay. Adam, your turn?
Thank you. As we discussed in study session, I would like to, at this point, introduce no vote on two amendments, I'm sorry, two ordinances. One would be amending the city code to add a new chapter, 18A, elimination of illicit discharges in connection to storm water drainage systems. And the second introduction is the repeal of the license requirement for lawn care services. And the two provisions that would be repealed are 7.396 and 7.397.
All right.
And we'll move this forward to the twen, next week, to the 20th.
Next week, okay.
Going to next week.
Okay. Mr. Brightwell?
No, you got to require a vote tonight. You're going to move it to the 20th.
To the 20th, correct.
Yes.
Yep.
I move that ordinance 17 point, 1713, regarding the amendment of the city code to add a new chapter, is introduced. And I also move that ordinance 1714... chapter is introduced, and I also move that ordinance 1714 regarding the ordinance to repeal section 7.396, definitions in section 7.397, license required of chapter 82 also being introduced. Could you get those numbers again, please?
1713 and 1714.
Got it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep, Mr. Fercassi.
Sorry to keep bothering you, but what, what are the ordinances on?
The 1713 is regarding the amendment of the city code to add chapter 18A, eliminate, elimination of the illicit discharge in connection to the stormwater drainage systems that we discussed in study session. And ordinance 1714 is the repeal of the lawn care licensing.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Ms. Taylor?
I move that we introduce ordinance number 1713 for the chapter 18A to add new, to add new chapter 18A elimination of illicit discharges and continue connections to the stormwater draining, drainage system.
Support?
Been moved by Ms. Taylor, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we introduce ordinance 1713, chapter 18A, elimination of illicit discharges and connections to stormwater drainage systems. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Mr. Chair?
Or just been introduced?
Yes.
I also would like for us to introduce ordinance number 1714.
Support?
Yes.
We have read it already.
It's been moved by Ms. Taylor, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we introduce ordinance 1714, which is the ordinance to repeal section 7.396, license required as it relates to lawn care services in the city. All those in favor?
Aye.
And are there any opposed? All right, both have been introduced. Thank you.
7.396 and 397.
Oh, and 397, I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you.
Correct.
No other items from the, from my office, other than when you get to the ordinance section, I, I can have a comment on the medical marijuana licensing.
Okay. All right. Madam Clerk, did you have anything for us this night?
No, sir.
All right. And I don't believe our treasurer's here, planners, assessors, and such, so I guess we're back to ordinances now, so.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Taylor?
I'd like to, to enact ordinance number 1711, the Rizone Request for MGA Architects, Inc.
Been moved by Ms. Taylor, supported by Ms. Morris, that we enact ordinance 1711, Rizone Request for MGA Architects. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
No.
No, all right. And then item B. Madam Attorney?
Item B, that is ordinance 1712, I'm sorry, the medical marijuana licensing ordinance that we discussed last month, and the changes have been placed, there was some discussion about credit and debit cards and not having transfers for, if it, just a provisional license has been issued prior to final licensing. And so those changes were put into this ordinance that's in your packet.
Yep, okay. All right, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we enact ordinance number 1712, medical marijuana licensing.
Support? Been moved by Mr. Brightwell, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we enact ordinance 1712, medical marijuana licensing. Are there any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
No.
All right, ordinance has been enacted. All right, I'll now entertain a motion to move in a closed session.
I move that we go into closed session?
Support.
Been moved by Mr. Frazier, supported by Mr. Brightwell. I guess that we go into closed session. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilman Brightwell?
Yes.
Councilman Fercassi?
Yes.
Councilman Frazier?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Yes.